What's up? Great, thank you. I'll call the meeting of the helmet school committee to order for a special meeting on Monday, October 28, 2024. Please join me in the pledge. Way down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In a portion with the Massachusetts open meeting law, I remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of the meeting, please notify me first by raising your hand, either in person or remote, state your name and the purpose of the recording. Anyone reporting today? Great, thank you. Before we get started, I just want to address a couple of things. First, thank you all for last minute scheduling an extra meeting. I know everyone's schedules are full, but I appreciate everyone being here tonight. The second item is some confusion about public comment. Open meeting law actually doesn't require us to take public comment ever, but we do almost every meeting. We we take public comment to hear from the community. We don't, however, usually take public comment at special meetings or short meetings, and this is both. So I know there was questions about that, especially since we called it out on the agenda. I just wanted to make sure since we've had so much public comment lately that people would not come with the expectation that we would have time for that tonight. And the last thing, oh, two more things, sorry, is that we did get some emails about limiting public comment according to the MASC policy, which suggests a limit of 15 minutes for the school committee members. If you feel strongly about limiting or not limiting public comment moving forward, if you want to email me and we'll include that in the agendas. Last is about email. First, thank you, Terry. So many emails you've been responding to. We really appreciate it. And for the public, if you are emailing individual members of the committee, so if you send an email just to me, not the rest of the committee, you will likely either not get a direct reply or you'll get a reply from Terry because each year the school committee has one member that replies to the public. And so all of those messages are coming from her, just so you're not waiting and wondering why we're not writing you back. I just want to make sure you know why. It's just our standing policy.
I get a big stipend in my paper doing it.
Yes. Double, double, double to zero. Yeah. Okay, thanks for listening to all those updates. And now I'm going to turn it over to the presentation from Superintendent on recommendations for the timeline for navigating future proposed plan one and two.
All right, thank you. We've been listening to the community and we acknowledge these proposed plans have been unsettling for some of our staff and parents. After much reflection, I would like to extend the timeline for consideration of proposed plans one and two. This extended time will provide ample time for the consultant to conduct a thorough study, time for administration, the building needs task force and the school committee to review the study and consider alternative plans. I stand by the early learning center and that the service we can provide to our young families and most importantly to our students. However, we should allow time for all considerations. Therefore, I'm also recommending that nothing will begin or be implemented during the 2025, 2026 school year regarding proposed plans one and two.
Okay, short and sweet. And so we'll open it up to a conversation and discussion before acting on anything. And you know, we're so grateful to have building needs here with us because this is so, you're so integral to this process. We set the process in place and so you should have the opportunity to weigh in as as we will consider whether or not to approve this request from the superintendent. Are there comments or questions related? Okay.
Okay, Terry. I wrote comments and since we asked the public to keep it to two minutes, I tried to keep mine to two minutes.
Okay, fair enough.
So we're supposed to comment how we feel about the proposal, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to see us request advice from the consulting firm we hire on three topics. Number one, the best scenario for dealing with declining enrollment. Number two, the most efficient way to update and or relinquish our Asian buildings. And three, the least disruptive method among our current grade configurations to increase pre-K enrollment. I feel we should not approach the consulting company with any predetermined notions about reconfiguring our schools. Let them suggest to us. Along that being, we should not hold more public forums on the proposals one and two. There's a lot of time and energy to go into these discussions of these proposals and a consultant may recommend another way to reconfigure. I think we should wait to hear the recommendations from the experts. So some people are for these proposals and some are against them. An independent firm with expertise, which we don't really have ourselves, should guide our path forward. Okay, so I looked at the contract that we have from a very reputable consultation firm and I noticed there's a few things that they don't advise upon. One of them is.
Can I just ask before you finish, I'm horrible with the time against you. I just want to make sure that we're focusing on what's on the agenda, which is whether or not we're going to approve extending the timeline, which may, I'm not sure where you're going, but I just want to make sure that we're not, that we don't take a turn and be talking about the consultant entirely because that's not really.
It's related in my, my idea is about to type. Okay. In the contract, I noticed that they don't deal with transportation technology or security. So I think we need to keep this in mind is keep this in mind as we move along the data collections that we're doing. We, I think we might also review the work done by other districts such as Watertown, Cambridge, Boston and Springfield, which offer free pre-K programs. The governor of our state realizes that Massachusetts is behind other states in the nation in regards to a pre-K enrollment. So I would imagine there are state funds that help would help districts in their efforts to increase their pre-K enrollment. And I think these funds might be available to help us pay our consulting firms. So.
Okay, are there comments of, I really want us to stick to the topic and not break openly discussing things that are clearly not within the purview of our agenda. So.
Point of clarification, Dr. Dork, could you read again what you are proposing to postpone? Until when you, could you read it again?
I can read it, but I could also discuss it. Yeah, yeah, okay. So proposed plans one and two, I don't have an end date. Basically, we need to have a study back. We have to have time to study it. All groups, like administration, I want the the building needs task force and the school committee to be able to study the consultant study, right? Whatever the report that comes back to us. And then if there are alternative proposals or options within that report that we take time to to consider those. And because of that, I feel like nothing should be implemented for proposed plans one and two for next year for the next school year. But what comes back will, you know, kind of lead us, I think, into what could be down the future of of what we're implementing and not implementing, right? And so I just want to leave it wide open and not not be prescriptive at this point. Yeah.
It's hard to separate these a little bit because proposed plans one and two are very connected to three, four and five. And my concern with pausing for a year for a prescribed amount of time is that we're still going into this process with a preconceived idea of what the proposals should be. And we're taking them and putting them on hold while this process is undertaken. And that seems disingenuous to me because that that leads us to the conclusion that we're probably going to come back to them at some point. But if the data that's collected and the needs assessment and the feasibility study don't support plans one and two, then they shouldn't be on the agenda for a future time until we know whether or not they're the correct things for the community. So I'm not, I'm not clear that pausing. I know, I know the community has said pause, but I'm not there. Pausing is the solution.
So I just want to clarify because I think I heard you say that there would, that the delay would allow for time so that whatever comes back. So if what came, what I heard was what if it, if it comes back that we should not be doing any of those, we should instead be doing F Y or Z, there would be time for that.
My, my real concern though is if we are applying for this grant for Lawrence on the basis of this whole package of proposals, I'm imagining, I don't know what goes into the applications for the grants, but I'm imagining that reconfiguring grades and merging schools and finding space for fifth graders and closing a school all play into our application. Now, I've heard varying things. Margaret is nodding, shaking her head, but they're all connected. And my concern in brief is that we are going to put ourselves in a situation down the road where we then have to accept proposed plans one or two in some form in order to be in compliance with a grant if we get it, you know? I don't want to be in that situation.
I don't either. Paul, can you speak to that?
Yeah. Proposals one or two do not affect Lawrence application period. The Lawrence is the MSBA is looking at the renovation of a single building. What will impact that is whether you determine that building to have three grades or two grades, but not, not, you know, they're not considering what's happening at the elementary school because there's no elementary school that's been applied for renovation. So it's the the application that we submit between January and April is purely on the Lawrence School. It being built in 1953, Salmons not having had a project in front of the MSBA before for a long time. And and then it moves forward on that basis. Then thereafter, in the period of time where we're supplying our academic program, our enrollment data, our maintenance program, that's where we're narrowing down what the final grade structure would be, whether it be five, six, seven with six, seven, eight or two grades. This, the recommendation, go for three and back it down if we need to. But again, what happens at the elementary school levels, whatever the decision is, is is not going to impact the Lawrence application. It will always sort of delay the renovation. So.
And just for clarification, the Lawrence, the submission, the to the MSBA before those great configurations would have to be determined, we are talking at least two years down the road.
Yes.
If not more.
The final, final grade configuration would be, you know, in that second phase after we're accepted in the program. What you'd want to do is sort of project to three grades. You don't want to go for projecting for two grades and then try to move up the application for three. That's a harder move. We can move from three to two. But, oh, but in that, I don't, that, you know, post acceptance into the program, which is really based on the, again, the age of the building and whether that the town has been before the MSBA recently, which in our case we haven't. Then now we're accepted into the program. Now that whole final configuration is is determined.
I just want to clarify because I just want to make sure I've got it right. So so we, if we were to apply for the Lawrence renovation to MSBO after the after the first of the year, that would only be to get in the door and that application doesn't include the configuration. It's not until the next part.
It will include it, but it's not the final.
Okay, all right. I didn't understand.
You have a chance to work that out in the final configuration of the building. You have time. I mean, it's a long process.
Okay.
But the recommendation is you go in with, for example, three grades. Apply on that basis. And then if your plan changed from three to two, then you can, in the second year, when you're in that second phase of the study, then you you lower your numbers to.
Thanks, Mike.
I have three things. I'll be quick. The first thing is that we can't talk about three, four and five because it's not the agenda. See? Yeah. Number two is, oh, I said the last meeting, I think that we should, and I'll make this motion later. We should stop this with no timetable until, as Terry said, we we get some consulting, but without going too deep, I would vote to just stop it. And my third thing is more of a personal thing where I'm assuming most of these folks from T ticket. And I got a phone call the other day from a friend from North Falmouth. This is causing a lot of community strife. And whether this happens or doesn't happen, some of that, some of those issues will carry on. And the T ticket, the East Falmouth, the North Falmouth, the Mullen Hall, at some point in time, we all come to Morse Pond for now, but later on we'll go to Lawrence, but we all come together. So I don't want this to cause issues with the community in the town. So I again will motion to stop this with no timetable until consulting or whatever gets done.
Do you like to weigh in as building needs?
I don't want to get in trouble by speaking.
No. We invited you guys.
The school building committee has not met prior to this meeting. So this information is new to us as well as to the community, though the superintendent has communicated to us that this would be on the agenda. In terms of the school buildings, we had focused on one and two and two or three meetings. We also focused on five, you know, three, four and five. So if you put one and two on hold, that's fine. Most of the discussion of the committee has been, we're not sure what we wanted around one and two, whether it was going to be the configuration that the superintendent recommended or another configuration. So firstly, I as chair, I firmly support that delay. But it also hopes that the building committee can finalize recommendations on three, four and five at some point, based on what Paul's done on the grade configuration. Our initial meetings, there's been no, I think, concern about the renovation of Lawrence School. I mean, that that's an old building that that needs to happen. The timeline, I think, is a good idea. We as a building committee, at the direction of the school committee and the superintendent, will delay any further discussion on one and two. It's outside our jurisdiction because we've been charged with not doing it at this point. The use of a consultant is, in my opinion, the best thing we possibly could do. They get generated out of this committee that we wanted someone to look at it. But to clarify some of the emails that I've read, we hope that we know that the consultant would deal with the four elementary schools. Yeah, North Mullen, T ticket and East Falmouth. And we're not also asking the consultant to validate the school committee and superintendent's recommendation concerning items one and two. This is an objective study. This NESTIC group has been around long, for a long time, even though when I was commissioner, and that's a long time ago. So and they've done a good job. They have experience in enrollment projections. They will not get into curriculum issues. In other words, is pre-K better than K five? I mean, that's the school committee's decision. Superintendent has been very clear about the emphasis on pre-K. So we support it. The other committee members don't agree with my comments. Too bad. No, he kidding? I said that before. They're all around the table. They're all free, independent spirits. And we love that. This is a wide open area and I think you got to bring the community together on this issue. Mike, I think you're right. We, it doesn't have to split the community apart. We, the superintendent listens, the school committee listens. Now let us get on with our work. Let's get the Lawrence School application in. Let's look at three, four and five. Let's put a hold on one and two. And let's guarantee the parents that come next September, no changes on K to four. And I think that's, can't ask for any more than than that. And I give the school committee credit for having this meeting tonight.
Thanks and thanks for coming. And so just, just following up on what you said, so you were able to clarify or to communicate with the consultant company that they should look at, to take an objective look at the topic, not, can you please confirm? Okay. In terms of should you decide as the building needs task force that you want even more time? Would that, is that something you feel comfortable either now or later saying to us, okay, well, we delayed for this year, but we want another year or? I'm sure you want to meet every other month for the next three years.
Yeah, we don't want to meet every month for the next five years, but we've been committed for the meetings we have. But I'm not speaking for my my co-members, but we're going to do what's best for the system. I mean, that's what, that's why we volunteered to do this. So if it has to be one more meeting or we take a hiatus for a couple of months till we get the consultant's report, we'll do that. And again, that's the school committee's responsibility to direct us on how they want it to happen, not what the final input would be. But the timeline, we'll go along with the school committee and superintendent agree to.
I guess what I was getting is I want to make sure it's clear that should building needs say to us, we want more time, that you have that option to say that and then we would.
We're free spirits.
Yeah, good. Great. Any other, I welcome any other of the building needs, please.
So Mike, I just wanted to clarify what you were asking, just is a little bit different than what Dr. Dura is putting forward, where Dr. Dura is recommending a pause until we get more data. You're recommending taking one and two off the table until we get that data back to try to come up with our own plans.
Elliot, I'm okay. Yes.
Yeah, please answer that.
Yeah, okay. What I am saying is that it makes more sense in my mind to do the work and once we've done the research and once we have the data, then come back and say, now we're ready for cycle two, the next step in the process. As opposed to this is our deadline, we have to get it done. And whether we extended a year or two years, I don't think that's the way to do it. I think the way to do it is to get the information and say, this is where we feel is the best option to move forward. And at that point in time, open up the communication for a timeline as opposed to we're doing it at this day or this day. If that makes sense.
No, it does. And I agree.
I, I agree that we should extend the timeline for whatever's going to happen. But I'm going to talk about it in a little larger context. The most important thing I feel as a member of school committee is that we provide the best education for every child. That means children who excel to run the gamut to those who have special needs. And the only reason that buildings come into this is that buildings support that process, supports the culture, it supports a safe environment and environment where students can, every student can learn. Based on that, I have certainly listened and I respect and I'm glad to hear from a whole lot of participants in this community. And sort of like Mark, Michael, I, I think that the notion of this community is very important. Unfortunately, we've only heard from a part of this community and that's a major concern of mine. If there are people in this community who are in favor of some support, then they need to make their voices heard. My primary concern is the students and their best education for every one of them. And we've heard people and their concerns, and I respect every one of their concerns I've heard. But if there are people in this community who feel that some proposals are good and valid, then I think we need to hear from them. And the next thing I'm going to say I know is not going to be received lightly. But the other constituencies that are involved in this are the town of Falmouth. And I heard that the town of Falmouth doesn't want to do anything until the school committee makes a decision. I do believe that this process needs to be done in communication with the town of Falmouth. If they don't want a building, they should tell us. They think it's great to have all these schools open, they should tell us. If they don't like this idea, they should tell us. Unless we hear from the town, we are, we're the only people making a decision and we make a decision within the town of Falmouth. And I think it's so important that every member of the town of Falmouth gets their voices heard and we hear those voices. Thank you.
Nancy, can you address a little bit about why the town, I mean, I, I totally understand that you don't want to influence our process. No, I, can you share?
The issue is this, you are the board elected to make educational decisions. And part of the making those educational decisions includes how you use your buildings. Until or unless you signal to the town that you are going to do, get rid of a building or or give it back to the town, town management really doesn't have a say. It's under the school committee's purview. When and if it comes to that point, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Antonucci, but when it comes to the point where you say we're going to be giving a building back, town manager gets involved and starts to think about what am I going to do with the building? How can we repurpose the building? What can we do with the land? There are several options that he could think about, but until that time, he does not have a say over what the school committee does with his buildings.
Can I respond to that? And I respect this answer. I have very respect you and I hope you know that. However.
However. And however, hold on. However, negates everything before the however. So what do you need to say?
But needs everything before. I'm not.
However, is the same thing.
But but one of the proposals is that we are considering giving a building back to the town.
Right.
And so I think it'd be who's the town to let us know their thoughts about it. That's all. I don't expect you to tell me what you want to do with it.
I don't think he has a lot of thoughts about it until the school committee tells him we have come up with proposals that put Morse Pond School offline, then it's his problem.
But then. Okay.
Point, point.
Let's, let's.
Problem three.
It's not there.
Yeah, but it's.
But but you, you haven't made that decision. It may be an idea, but we see how some of the ideas have been, what has, what has happened to the ideas. So he doesn't know. I'm sure he's thinking about what he might do with it, but until the school committee gives it back to him.
It's on us.
It's on you to make that decision.
I, you know, I, I do worry at the idea of, okay, well, it would be great if we could put affordable housing there, but and then we relinquish a building thinking that's what it's going to be and then it's not because that's not what the town wants. And then we'll have made a decision based on inaccurate information. So anyway, Chris.
I'm kind of in the same boat as Mike, Katrina and Margaret. And I'm not convinced that we need to give up a school. I mean, I have not seen that yet. So would the town be all right if we choose that what's best for our schools and our community is we hold on to every single building that we have? And in terms of the school committee kind of driving what the building needs committee is, I'm a little uncomfortable with this process because I have not quite seen that. I don't even know what the scope of the proposals are. I know Terry kind of mentioned that. I don't know what companies we've been even looked at for proposals. I would think the school committee being the body that is accountable to the public which we serve should be the, the group that is kind of making, taking the lead with some of these decisions. And I feel like that is not the case. I'll kind of leave it at that for right now.
Kelly, can I make a quick point?
I want to, you've already spoken once and I want to make sure we get around to everybody first. So any other members of our building needs can weigh in?
So I I'm, I'm sort of thinking that I love taking extending the timeline because I feel heard from our meeting last week where I said, how are we going to absorb all of this information at an extraordinarily busy time in people's lives? And it seems like getting the consultants working parallel with the consulting firm and trying to absorb it in the moment and then absorbing the final product presumably from the consultant firm in December and then making a recommendation being, making a decision on the school committee in January seemed like a very crunched timeline for a very big decision. So I feel heard and thank you to extend the timeline. And I, I didn't think I was going to feel this way, but again, I think that we need to take as much time as we need. And if it means that extending the timeline a year and then revisiting it and not necessarily making a decision in a year because perhaps we don't have. a year and then revisiting it and not necessarily making a decision in a year, because perhaps we don't have input from the community, input from the consultant, enough time to digest that, including but not limited to maybe, um, we, I don't know, maybe we don't give up a building, or maybe I, I can't predict the future. All I wanna say is that I think it's really important to take a lot of time and make sure that we're getting all the information, because there's nothing worse than making a decision for being, being forced into a corner and have to make a decision on the fly when you just don't have everything in front of you. And, um, taking this role as school committee is extraordinarily important to me personally, speaking of something personal. And I would never want the, um, I, I trust the people of Falmouth who kindly put me here and I, I, I trust that, I I have a lot of pride in the trust that they have in me and I wanna make sure that I, when I vote, that it is absolutely and like emphatically, because I have all the information in front of me.
And I think that that is, I, I think like for me, it's, that's what I hear from everyone. I feel like we're all kind of saying the same thing in a lot of ways, that we all wanna make sure that we make a good decision. Because we take it so seriously and if it takes a year or it never happens, or it takes two years and we vote no or whatever it happens to be, like I, I, maybe I'm missing it, but I feel like we're saying the same thing. That we wanna have enough time to make a good decision and that's what, that's what this would be. And then in a year, if we wanna say, okay, let's take it off the table entirely. I do worry about, um, eliminating the up, the proposal one and two, and then at the same time paying a consultant to investigate this topic. Doesn't really work in my brain, um, because then as a district, we're investing funds in something that we're technically not even considering. So, um, that would be my reason for not eliminating the proposals and instead just indefinitely extending the timeline until we have what we need.
I'm sorry, um, I just would like to support what Chris said. Um, one of my questions is what exactly are we asking the consultants to do? And as Chris said, we're the ones that need to ultimately vote on this. And I feel, I, I don't know how this process with building needs can be improved. But I too feel very removed from this process. And so, um, I, I would like for us to consider how we can more closely collaborate, um, and, and be a part of, of exactly what we're asking the consultant to do. I'm not clear what we're asking the consultant to do. Are we asking them, as you said, Kelly, to examine these N T ticket? Or are we asking them to put everything on the table, including redistricting? I, I, I've asked about that a number of times. I think we need to be very specific.
So I think I did at our last meeting, you mentioned that any request for what the building, what that consultant should look at should come to me, but I didn't get anything from anyone. Um, Bob, can you speak to, you've had a conversation, I think, with the, or at least been involved in the consultant's conversations. Can you speak to, you know, what you conveyed to them for what they should do?
Well, here's the issue, the issue of a consultant came up in a building needs committee, not, didn't generate from the school committee, and that's not a criticism. Uh, we had a meeting and one of the members brought up the fact, well, maybe we need to bring in a consultant to have an objective opinion about the buildings, not to get into the educational programs. We then forwarded that to the superintendent, fully realizing that the school committee and superintendent are the final decision makers, we're an advisory group, okay? Uh, based on that, we did contact Nesdick and Laurie did that at the urging of the school committee to come up with a proposal to look at K to four or K to five, the four elementary schools. Uh, and they normally look at enrollment and projections and configuration and grade structure, et cetera. So that's where we're coming from. We're not trying to beat the school committee. Uh, we were asked to come on board, uh, to do a job, and I think we've done it well so far. But at the same time, as I listen to the discussion tonight, we may need to take hiatus. I think we all agree there's a Lawrence School needs to happen. And I think if we could vote right now, I hope, Mike, uh, we would all vote that the Lawrence School, uh, would go on. So that work is done, okay? Um, I see not much more for the school building committee to do until we get that objective consultant's report, which you may not agree with and which we may not agree with. Uh, we're not elected people, we're just a advice group, and we don't wanna be caught in the crossfire uh, between the superintendent, the school committee, the building committee. Up to this point, I think everyone's doing the right thing, the whole host of different opinions. This is great to hear the comments of the school committee, you're in a tough spot. So again, I'm not speaking for the whole building committee, but at this point, we have nothing left to do until we hear from the consultant. Uh, cause we really have agreed, I think as a group, that the Lawrence School needs to happen. I think we all agree to that. Whether Moss Pond becomes voted surplus by the school committee is another issue. That really isn't at this point in time, uh, our decision. And not that we don't wanna do any more work, but I think at this point, if I were making a recommendation, and I'm not making a suggestion, um, that the consultant be hired, if you should all look at the contract, uh, that the consult has, decide whether or not we should move forward, move forward with it, and then when that work is completed, uh, we then can get, get back to work. You asked me what I, I said to the consultant, if the school committee votes to extend this, there's no pressure for the consultant to complete his whole work by December. That came up at our meeting, that if we're gonna bring a consultant, have the work done by December. That's rushing it, there's no need to rush, based on the vote that I think you're gonna take tonight, I guess, on one and two. If that happens, then the consultant has ample time to do a more comprehensive study. And again, uh, and Laurie was in a conversation with me also, this is open. Uh, we're not directing the consultants, or you're not gonna direct the consultant just to focus on T ticket and each family, that would be unfair. You need to look at the implications of a high elementary district, uh, K to four dash five.
So let's.
I have some concerns about the disconnect that I, I hear at least two members say between the building needs task force and the school committee. I don't understand what that disconnect is. We have, we have school committee members who attend our meetings, we have staff from, from the district who attend our meetings. There's nothing going on that, and Sandy takes notes, so I, I don't understand where that's coming from, I guess.
Well, and I think it's, it's a strange, it is a strange relationship to have an advisory group, you know, but it needs to be somewhat separated from our process, otherwise none of this good work and conversation would have happened. If we had all done this internally, then all this engagement from different members across the community wouldn't have happened. So it is, you know, the most, um, that we ever engage with an advisory group, which is a little unusual for us. Okay, everybody's got their hand up, but I promised Mike a long time ago, he could speak second. And he never did. Do you still remember what you wanted to say?
Yeah, but I'll, I'll pass it.
Okay.
Mine's on the topic that Nancy brought up. I think it's a simple matter of a procedure. We never filled out what we would like to see. There was no formal, um, document from the school committee that said, look at this, look at this, look at this. It just got lost in the shuffle. Um, so that's really maybe not a disconnect, but a missing part that would be the liaison between. I mean, and I.
I don't think it's done. But are you talking about the consultant or are you talking?
If you let me finish my sentences, maybe I'm talking too fast, um, but please quit interrupting. We, that, um, Glenda I heard say, and other people say that, it wasn't clear what we were looking for. I simply think we didn't fill out a document to give to them. I mean, they will do anything that we ask. They absolutely, I don't think we ever asked them what avenues to go down. So it's just a missing document. I don't think there's any disconnects or, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Um, personally for me, I can't get a babysitter to come to those meetings and they're not recorded as far as I know. So I'm relying on notes and then we don't get the emails that you guys get. I'm not complaining necessarily, cause I get a lot of emails, I spend all day reading them. But I know a few people sent emails to the needs, the building needs group and I don't, I didn't see them. And what we get back is data points and that's not the same. And so that's part of the disconnect for me. I can't physically be at the meeting, there's no record of the meeting other than what these notes were written down. And then what we get back is just sort of denuded data points. Um, Nancy, your other point about the town wanting us to tell the town whether we wanna give up a building. This whole proposal was premised on the idea that the town was going to take a building from us if we didn't offer them one. That's how it was proposed, that's how it was presented to me. I'm new to town. I believe what I have been told. The town is gonna take a building if we don't choose one. That's what they told us. And also the timeline was given to us. We didn't set the timeline, we didn't vote on the timeline, we didn't, I didn't know there was gonna be a December vote or anything until two days before this was released to the public. So that's some of the missing pieces. Um, I don't know if you want me to give more of what I've explained before, but that's an answer about the building needs.
Thank you. So, um, a couple of things. Um, I'm sorry that people feel disconnected with, uh, building needs. Uh, and to your point, Kelly, I, I respectfully disagree that we've not had, uh, a, uh, relationship between a task force in the past. Um, at some point when you're on a committee and you have subcommittees or a task force, you're, um, and you have, you know, these, you're on, I'm gonna use it. You're on school committee and you have a task force to look at perhaps school start times. Um, and while you are interested in school start times, you put yourself on school start times or you tell the chair that you're interested in being on school start times. And, um, although perhaps you, you are interested in school start times because it does affect every single student in the district. You, um, you trust your fellow school committee member and you don't micromanage the task force kind of thing. So, um, at some point, and, uh, this is just in life, you have to trust, uh, the person sitting next to you. Whether it be, um, you're on a, a larger committee and there's a task force or a subcommittee. You have to trust the people that they're going to present you with the notes from that meeting. Um, Sue presented, um, the notes from the meeting and, you know, although my children are fourteen and sixteen, it's not so long ago that I sat in your seat and I struggled to find sitters when they were little and I was new to this committee. So please don't think that I don't hear you. Um, and I, Glenda, I don't mean to call you off, but I, and maybe this is tied in with Terry's, that we don't have a formal document. Last Tuesday night, I took down every single question, and I take a little offense to this. I took down every single question that every single one of us that sits at the school committee member sits as a school committee member, and I took it to building needs and I presented it to building needs. So I am your liaison, I am a liaison with Sue to building needs and I, I, I've done that. If you don't like that, or if that isn't enough, I'm sorry. I'm happy to, to do more. If we wanna have a formal document, I'm okay with that too. You know, we could work on that together as well. But as, as far as, um, like there, I pride it myself on not having a veil to hide. You know, I don't hide, I'm open, I put my, I put myself out there chronically. Oftentimes that comes back to bite me at times. Um, so I'm taking this a little bit personal on a couple of different levels, but I, I'm I'm trying to do everything that we are being asked of, especially, um, with the being on a task force and sitting at this table, trying to check all the boxes, trying to make sure everyone's heard, trying to relay questions, concerns to, um, the building needs task force. So.
So I think, um, I think, could I, could I respond to that?
Sure.
Um, first of all, we really, none of us should be taking any of this personally. I certainly don't take any of the, the comments personally, so this is all.
This town personally.
I, I, I respect that and I.
Yeah.
My comments were not directed at performance, my comments were directed at process.
Okay.
And I agree with Terry that we should be leading the task and thus far, as I said, in terms of the consultant, I am not clear what exactly, up until this conversation, we were asking the consultant to do. Much of the information has been clarified and I appreciate that. Um, but as we have all acknowledged, and as, as you have acknowledged, we are the people that are voting on this. And we need to be as well informed of, in the process as possible. Part of that is also attending the building needs meetings ourselves. Um, part of that is also relying on the representation that you do expertly.
I'm not fishing for.
Well, I, I, I'm acknowledging your hard work, so thank you. Um, but it's the process, it is not the performance.
And I think we can probably, um, at least rectify some of that moving forward. Once we get, um, whatever comes back from the consultant. I'm sure they're gonna send us some contract that really outlines what their objectives are and that, we can share that, right? Can we share that? Once it comes, okay. Share that with the school committee and then we can all review it and make sure that it addresses the things that we would like it to see and ask for those to be, um, included, um, if there's things that are missed. So I think that's an easy fix, I think.
Would that, um, contract come to building needs? And then, because it was built, as Dr. Antonucci, um, mentioned, it was building needs that asked the consultant.
Sure. I mean, I'm sure you will, I'm sure it will come to building needs as well. Um, but it, I think that you've sort of had your, you guys have.
Sorry, Mike. Yeah, it, it will, but as I listen to the discussion, and don't take this as a criticism. Um, I think the work of the bu, the building committee should be suspended to decide what you really want us to do. Uh, we were doing what the superintendent and school committee asked us to do, and we did it well, and we had two representatives on the committee. But at this point, we have given up, well, we have a recommendation on the Lawrence School, that's there, that's fine, you're, that's your final decision. There's really nothing more for us to do until you decide, and you, school committee, what the next step is. And we're taking one and two off the table. That's what we have focused many, a lot of our meetings. And we're, we'll, we'll suspend the committee for a while, that's all. I mean, I'm not gonna sit, we don't wanna sit for two hours in a meeting and really get into an issue that you don't want us to get into, or, and we're not ready to get into. So I, my suggestions would be is get the contract, uh, from the superintendent legally. She, again with the Nesdick, they deal with the superintendent directly, not with the building needs committee chair. Um, get that, share that contract, decide what you want to do. I mean, basically what we ask them to do is look at K to five and the four elementary buildings, and enrollment and projections and possible alternatives in terms of curriculum. That's as simple as I can be in terms of a contract. And they do this all the time. So decide that, we're not walking away, I think we're all committed. But no sense of us meeting until we have further direction on what you want us to do. There's no need for conflict. When I, we're in this all together, back to your comment about, and I read about, it's all about the students we serve. That's the bottom line. That, in the end, that's why we're, we're giving up our time to do it. So that's where we are. Anybody disagree with me?
And I will make a comment that I put on the table, the consultant, I put it on the table in front of the building's, uh, needs task force because it had come up in several emails and that people wanted another agency to take a look at what we were doing and what, what the school committee was looking at. So I put it on the table and it was voted to move forward in that vein.
And I think we're all gonna benefit from that.
I have two more things. First of all, Dr. Antonucci, disbanding the committees not on the agenda, so you're just gonna stop for now. But my second thing. You just, just, no, my second thing, so in addition, you just said that they're looking at K through four, K through five at all the elementary schools. And with that comment, extending, uh, one and two don't make sense because one and two are tied directly to T ticket and each family. And we're hamstringing ourselves by keeping those extended while they're consulting, which we don't know what they're doing yet. Uh, is going on. So my motion again would be to eliminate proposals wanting to, from navigating the future at this time.
Margaret, did you have something else?
My hand was up, cause I, I, I wanna repeat, um, it goes on, this is a community.
And I really think it's, we, I don't just want the consultant's report. I want Dr. Dora's report and her analysis and their report she did before the proposal. I want the consultant report. I want to hear from the community. All members of the community. I've certainly heard from a lot of members of the community, and I think we've heard some really fine ideas and thoughts. But I think that, you know, there are silences of the community. Again, I go back to learning T F B of town. I think that if we are in a community, we need to have decent discussions, resolve this in peace, and listen to a variety of ideas and come up with what's best for our students. And I go back to building needs is a misnomer. This is about student education. It is not about buildings.
Okay. I Chris, final thoughts? Because I feel like we, you know, we, we're now kicking around a lot of other stuff. And we really need to we need to address the, the actual item on whether or not we're going to extend the timeline.
Just kind of talking about Glenda's, um comment about process. You know, we, we voted to approve the appointments to the building needs committee in June of last year before we even knew what the building needs task force was going to be. So we approved two members of the building needs task force. We did not approve anyone else. And so when people say that it's the school creating the superintendent's charge for the building needs, I don't know if I exactly believe that. Um, because we didn't play a hand in every member that was selected for the building needs committee. And so, so
My comment is very much on topic. Oh, sure. Okay. Back to the topic. I am uncomfortable postponing the, for a year. I don't know why we would postpone for a year. Why the timeline? Why not just postpone indefinitely?
I think it actually is indefinite. Yeah, I never said postpone for a year. I said there would be nothing starting next year. I said the timeline will go until we have a time to do it. So that is an indefinite postponement. Just making it clear, nothing would start next year. Even if we did get through this whole process, we wouldn't have time to implement anything next year.
Okay. All right. So my comment is, we at the moment are doing a needs assessment on K through four for all four elementary schools. Proposals one and two are entirely predicated on the assumption that we need a pre-K establishment. And the feasibility study and needs assessment that are proposed do not take that into account.
We did, we did say pre-K.
No. Pre-K, pre-K to five.
But this needs assessment, you just said it'd be K to four.
Well, right now the K to four, there's not a pre-K, but if you're, the consultants will look at pre, pre-K to four. Laurie was clear about that.
And that would include like all of the existing providers of feasibility study, looking to the entire community.
I don't, they look at it. I don't know what
YMCA that's coming up. I'm just thinking of all the
I'm not sure of that, so.
You're not sure about that. So I, they would have to decide that. We can't, we don't want to play parameters on it, because then they
Are we putting, are we in charge of what the, um, study is?
Yes, or yes, yes. We're going to, that's what I was just saying, like, once we get the contract that outlines what it will be from the company, then it will come to the school committee and we can review it and kicking the can down the road, um, only works if we gather data that's going to actually support the entire decision when we get to that.
I use Dr. Anthony's word hiatus. Um, I think we should also take a hiatus from the community forums that talk about proposals one and two. That's still how they're listed, because we should take a hiatus from it, because it takes a lot of time and energy for a lot of people to go to those meetings. They prepare their questions and all the energy. I think we should take a hiatus from those, too. Okay, they're out of sight and out of mind, and then they can come back. I'm not saying they, they're gone. I just, I like your word. Hiatus, it's a good word. So you take a hiatus and we'll take a hiatus.
I'm leaving it right now.
I think if, if the school committee is not happy with the members of the task force, then you need to look at that. And if we're not what you want
I'm just talking more about the process, not the people.
What I'm, what I'm saying is if you're not happy with the process, then you can redesign the process and choose who you want. We're giving up our time because we are so invested in Falmouth. Both as previous superintendents, both as, as people who have been committed to Falmouth for a very long time. If you're not happy with the process, you can choose someone else.
Okay. So let's come back to the item that's actually listed. Is there a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for extending the timeline for navigating the future? Those plans one and two.
So
Thanks, Sue. Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, any last discussion?
Can I make an amendment? To replace extending and just insert totally deleting.
No, I think that's far from what we said we were going to do. I, I appreciate the we're the sentiment.
But that's somewhat friendly in the
It's not close enough to the topic that we posted.
Okay, may I, may I, may I? May I, may I make a point of clarification and point of order? This meeting would go on for about an hour now, and I've made the same motion twice.
Oh, I, I interpreted that as
I made the same motion twice. So I would like to re, I'm, I'm going to vote that down, Sue, no offense to you. But my motion has been and will be, because of the consultant and hamstringing us with proposition one and two, with proposal one and two, we should totally delete them and start from scratch with a full data-driven decision on all the schools pre-K to four. And that is my motion and
I do not think that that is in keeping with open meeting, because that is not what this says.
Okay, and I will vote no on this, and I will ask to have that motion on the next school committee.
Okay. Any last discussion? Uh, all in favor of, of approving the recommendation from the superintendent, say aye. And they're going to have to see your hands, because I'm not going to count. By voice.
Did you say handle what?
Oh, I, I need to see your hand, because I know it's going to be split and I can't count everyone.
We just
To support the extension.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm completely confused on what we're voting on, because to Mike's point, if this only this only pertains to proposals one and two, which are these Falmouth and T ticket. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So to be clear, to reiterate, we're voting on approving the superintendent's recommendation to extend the timeline for both plan one and two. Um, by show of hands, please, so that I can keep track.
Can I clarify something?
No, I just want to clarify.
We're still on the discussion part.
It doesn't mean and my understanding is it doesn't mean that we accept the proposal.
No.
It means that what we're going to look at is looking at the elementary schools and getting more information from a variety of ways to make a decision. It doesn't mean we're going back to the proposal as it is.
Right.
That's what we're voting on, is we're just saying, okay, we're dropping this right now. We're going to get hopefully lots of information from a variety of constituents, including Dr. Dora's report, including the consultant's report, hopefully including more reports from the community, and then we're going to vote on where we're going to move forward.
And I think, Margaret, though, the key of that is that there's no implementation in next year. So everyone can breathe that nothing is going to change next year.
I'm not going to, I just want to clarify.
I, but it still stands as a propose, these are the proposals. We're not starting from a clean slate, which I can't because we're getting new information. We should leave ourselves open to have new proposals. We are. So I mean, I'm waiting for the next week. Okay. Okay. Any last thoughts before we vote? All in favor of extending the timeline for proposals one and two, by show of hands, please?
Two, three, four, five. Motion carries.
Any, um, anyone anticipating? Thank you. All right.
And to clarify, this is just what Margaret just said. This doesn't mean that we're in favor or against one and two. This is just to can, to give us more
More time, time.
No, more information. More time to get more information.
And then do I have a chance here before we adjourn to request for the next meeting, an agenda item to delete for both of one and two?
No, not on the agenda, but any member can always email me with their agenda requests. And if there are more than one, then it will be considered, a single request never make out. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. A second? Oh, someone second. Thank you. All in favor?
All right.